...time. I appreciate you all for being here. This time we'll call the meeting to order and get started.
All right, Mayor Holland.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Brownlow.
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Commissioner Sawyer.
Here.
Commissioner Wooten.
Here.
Thank you ma'am. Please bow your head.
Recording in progress.
All right, well you are alive. Please bow your heads in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity to come together tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to gather, talk, discuss, make decisions that will benefit the town of Emerald Isle as a whole. We are blessed to live in such a paradise and may we all do everything we can to continue on the legacy of a family beach, nice matters, everything in between, and not let us take one day, one minute, one second on this beautiful place for granted. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and face our flag for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, it might be that mic.
Yeah, I'm turning this thing off here for a second. Hopefully that helped it a little bit. We're down a mic here, so bear with us just a second. Does that work? Okay, that works. This thing, we've got a little... Commissioner Wooten said we're not going to Janet Jackson this thing tonight. It's making too much noise.
Me and Alicia got this one. Did you almost click that one?
Yeah.
Me and Alicia had this one.
Yeah, you just spread out.
Let's try that.
Can everybody hear me okay? All right, great, perfect. Before we start with public comment, I want to lead off with a sad announcement of the passing of Lenora Libby Stephens Heverly. Born September 9th, 1937, she passed peacefully August 9th, 2025. Libby loved the town of Emerald Isle. She dedicated herself to this town. She served multiple terms. She was on the planning board for multiple terms. She served as a town commissioner and she served as our town's mayor. She helped establish our Parks and Rec department and she spearheaded a full-time paid fire department for our town, leaving a lasting legacy of service to her community. I know many members of Libby's family, Carl, Roy, Lisa, Rhiannon. I wish I had gotten an opportunity to know her more, sooner, and better, but Libby is the epitome of what is Emerald Isle. Her legacy will not be forgotten and her family will forever be in our thoughts and prayers. So please join me right now in a moment of silence for Ms. Libby. Everly family, you are in our thoughts and prayers. Libby, from all accounts, was an amazing woman and we'll pray for you and your family and your healing. Item number five will be our public comment. If you missed the sign-up sheet over to the left, you have three minutes to address the board and the community. I'll ask you a couple of different things. One, pay respect to the people that are up there doing public comment. I know there's a couple of hot-button items on the agenda tonight and that's okay. Your opinions, good, bad, in the middle, left side, right side, doesn't matter. Please pay respect to the people that are providing their comment. To the commenters, we have three minutes unless the rules or procedures change and that's okay too. Please try to limit your comments as close to three minutes as possible. At the end of three minutes, I'll hold up a little flag. Thank you for your comment. Not going to cut you off mid-sentence, but please finish your thought and pay respect to the other commenter's time. I will add, it was a very late development this afternoon, that the, or one or more of the requesters for the social district, the backyard district, proposed that the K&amp;V Plaza in Emerald Isle withdrew their request. That item has been removed from tonight's discussion. If it comes up for discussion at a future date, the board, the public, everybody else will be notified with ample notice. If you still have something to say about it, please feel free. If that's what you're here to talk about, I'm not going to cut you off. But just as a preface, that item has been removed from consideration per request of the applicant in the first place. So, that being said, we'll ask for our first public speaker.
Okay, so, nobody signed up on the public comment, but I do have the public hearing that people may have signed up by accident thinking it was the public comment.
Is there a public hearing on the social district?
No.
Okay.
It's on the ordinance changes.
All right, good enough. And I'll also add that per statute, that particular item, to be specific, did not require the board or the town to hold a public hearing. The board could still, with that issue or any other issue, elect to, or decide to have a public hearing, but there was not one required. The town, in an abundance of procedural correctness, decided to not hold a public hearing because it could really muddy the waters. Well, this got a public hearing, why didn't this get a public hearing? So forth and so on. So that being said, there was no advertised public hearing. There was not a requirement for a public hearing. If you accidentally signed up for the public hearing and you wish to speak now regarding that matter or any other, now is our public comment period. And I'll turn it back over to the clerk.
So I have Carol Peoples.
Hey neighbor. One thing before you start. Once you get that thing working, just set it down and leave it. I hate that thing. Just leave it on, please. Thank you ma'am.
Okay, is it working? Yeah.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, Carol Peoples, 401 Hickory Street. And I just wanted to speak briefly about the proposed UDO amendment about releasing residents from the need to submit for a permit for dead tree removal. I attended the planning board on June, I mean, sorry, July 28th, and this was proposed because the town has really had a big burden because we've had so many trees die from laurel wilt, that they've really had to do a lot of extra home visits and most of the time it ends up being, yes, the tree is dead. So the proposal, as I understand it, is that the person who wants the tree removed will be the person making the decision about whether it's dead or not. And while most people, I think, are good people and won't push that, some people, you give them an inch and they take a mile. And you can't remove a 40-year-old or 50-year-old tree and immediately plant one and get the same benefit. So I have a suggestion. I don't know if it's workable, but I'd be happy to volunteer to do some home visits. I could train people to do home visits just to say, yes, this tree is dead, just that somebody's looking at it. And then if the homeowner or property owner disagrees, then the town can go out. You know, that would at least release the town from having to send somebody out on so many visits. And I'm happy to do that for no pay. If there's liability issues, you can pay me $5. I don't know. But just an idea, because I think it's a, I think it would be a mistake to totally do away with the requirement. So, just a suggestion.
Thank you ma'am. Thank you Carol.
Good evening, sir.
Hi. My name is Dwayne McDougal. I live at 9252 Osprey Reeves Drive and I'm gonna try to run for that, one of those coveted seats on the board. I just want to make sure everybody knows who I am and I look forward to meeting you all during my campaign. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Irv, I have to tell you to hold that thing up high one more time. We're gonna have a problem, sir.
I learned my lesson.
Good to see you, sir.
The next sentence is a quote.
Irv.
The next sentence is a quote.
I love it.
Thanksgiving Day is the beginning of the Christmas season, which is the favorite time of the year for me. That sentence was extracted from a speech that was presented to a big crowd of people celebrating the Fourth of July in New York City in 1979. George Washington was the speaker. And tonight, I am going to talk about the one thing that moved me to do what we have done for the last one year of years, is to bring Christmas lights back to the town. Christmas is part of the Judeo-Christian forming of this country. Christianity has been under attack in this country for quite some time. So I feel proud to say that tonight, we have completed the, preparing the town of Emerald Isle to see the light from above, from 75 of our long poles and 67 of the shorter poles on Thanksgiving Day. And that is not an easy task. It was done by people like a member of our committee that is here representing the rest of the committee members, Dircelle Browning and seven others. Lydia is the chairman of the committee, but she is under doctor's orders not to be in public. She's got a problem with her eyes. So tonight, I want to also make specific thanks to people that have contributed immensely to the success we have had in getting this town on Thanksgiving Day lit up, looking at the light from above that shines bright on the United States of America today. I want to say thanks to Mark. Mark, you were able to get the fishing committee to donate $7,000 to our committee to be able to match some of the $7,000 that could be approved by the board as part of the overall $260,000 that they, $265,000 that they approved. So, to complete the say thanks, I want to say thanks to so many people that were instrumental in making our job so easy. Steve Fitch actually started the committee to do this. He cannot be in public anymore. He's got a big problem with his eyes. Lydia is just completing a visit to the doctor just a few hours ago. So I'm here to tell you that the committee that did this, seven people, deserve a bigger pause.
Thank you, Irv.
I also have to recognize the fact that this would not have happened without that board approving the $265,000, the first time that you met here on this room.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
I want to also say thanks to Frank. He already met with me a week ago and said, well, tell me how things are going with the lights. And I told him, he said, what do you need? I said, not much, just 30 more lights. He said, approved. So, the 75 poles will have lights also, just as the 67. Thanks to the board for making this whole thing possible.
God, well done to the Christmas decoration committee as well. You guys put a lot of time into that and we thank you so much.
Eric Ross.
Good evening, sir.
Neighbor. So I live at 407 Hickory Street. We've tabled the social district. That was what initially prompted, you know, a lot of what we had going on. Can you not know that better?
Yeah.
Pretty loud without this thing. That's not what prompted me to come to the meeting. Frank, what year did we change our town motto?
It was somewhere around 2015-ish.
We spent some money to do that, right?
I love it, sir.
Our town motto is?
Well, the two, there's nice matters and there's bad.
Nice matters is what we advertise out. That's what businesses are using. That's what we're seeing with these marketing campaigns that are bringing so many people down to the businesses on the island, correct?
That's included in the logo on the monument.
Did the town release an official statement or stance on the social district?
Let me stop you there. Not to, well, to interrupt.
Yeah.
Back to procedural correctness.
We can make it rhetorical.
Thank you for being here. Thank you for addressing the board. Thank you for addressing the public, the manager. It's not meant to...
Got it.
Or can it be a dialogue, just for, yeah, just, thank you for being here. Please share your thoughts.
That makes the next set really easy then.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I find it wildly disheartening that a letter went out, was released. It looked like it was on Town Letterhead. It looked like it was an official statement. Doesn't matter how I feel about the social district. Nobody's decided yet and it's a shame. And I think that the voting residents of Emerald Isle deserve to know who put that statement out and why it looks so official. And that's all I got. Appreciate everything and everything all y'all do.
Thank you. Sorry to cut you off. Just wanted to go off.
No, you're good.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
That's all I got.
All right, did we miss anyone? Joy? Hey, Joy.
Hello, Jason.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I wanted to comment behind, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Joy Brownlow. I live at 7506 Sound Drive. And I think that probably the reason that people put information out without a name sometimes is because there are so many people that are afraid to share how they feel, with good reason. The, I'm not a member of the Facebook groups because it feels to me very, a lot of what goes on there feels very mean-spirited. And you're not celebrated to have a different idea than a certain group in town. So I just don't really mess with it. But the reason that people call, write, and share information anonymously is because they're so afraid of being mocked and made fun of, in my opinion. And I know this because it's been done to me and my family. Many untruths have gone out about my family and I didn't prepare anything tonight. I kind of made this last minute if something did come up, but it has been done to me. I know what it's like. For example, this is just one example. It was said, and the words clear-cut, came from the attorney's office, and I know y'all, you hadn't ever been to my lot before. There's my natural area, there. And I have beautiful natural area there and there. That's just one example. I went and pulled two years of information. I couldn't find a lot that had more beautiful natural area than me. And I spent the night, the price, same price as a brand-new car, on preserving my natural area. It's beautiful. So if anybody wants to go on a field trip and ride around, we can do that. But the reason that people aren't comfortable sharing their names is because they're mocked and made fun of. It's hurtful. And are we really gonna go crazy about someone in town who's, like, anyway, who shares information and it gets shared with other people? I think that it is warranted to share a different opinion. Because changes were about to happen that are gonna, that could change the fabric of our town as we know it. Is that what we want our family beach to look like? How do we want it to look? Because if you let it, if you let one place do this, you're gonna have to let everybody, in all fairness. Everybody deserves to have the same chances that the other people have. So I think it's a good time for everybody to look and see the voters. What do you want the town to look like? What do you want your family beach to look like? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Did we miss anyone else? That sign-up sheet's pretty nondescript when everybody's coming in. Does anyone else have anything to say? All right. We thank you for all of your comments. Item six, we heard you. The follow-up to prior comments. There should be printed copies on the table from last month's meeting. If you missed it or they're not up there, please reach out to us. We'll get to them. Item number seven is a new item. Identification of any conflict of interest regarding tonight's agenda. Madam Clerk, if you'll go a little deeper.
So, I'm just gonna go through, kind of like roll call, and if anyone has a conflict of interest, please bring it to our attention.
Sure.
Mayor Holland.
None on my part.
Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
No.
Commissioner Brownlow.
No conflict.
Commissioner Sanderson.
No conflict.
Commissioner Sawyer.
No conflict.
Commissioner Wooten.
No conflicts.
Thank you.
All right. That'll bring us to item number eight, the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Sentenced.
Commissioner Sanderson with the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Item nine, we have our police chief, Mike Panzarella, with the introduction of a couple of new employees, I understand. He was here a second ago. There he is. Chief, you're up, sir. Good night.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce two new full-time officers that have joined our department. The first one I'd like to introduce is standing to my left, Mr. Nathan Barker. Nathan has three years prior law enforcement experience. He moved here from Clemens, North Carolina. Prior to getting into law enforcement, he served with the West Virginia Army National Guard for six years. He started his career at the Salisbury Police Department before laterling to the Yadkin County Sheriff's Office. Did I say that right?
You did, sir.
We had this conversation prior to us coming in here. There's certain counties, you have to pronounce them certain ways. And just wanted to make sure I pronounced Yadkin right. Nathan has a passion for DWI enforcement and keeping our roadways safe. He enjoys hunting and fishing in his free time. And most importantly, he looks forward to serving in Emerald Isle. So, Nathan Barker. Next, I'd like to introduce William Riley Klein.
Good evening.
He said, good evening. Riley was born in Fayetteville, North Carolina, and moved to Carteret County at the age of 15. Riley's motivation to pursue his career in law enforcement stemmed from childhood experiences. Both of Riley's parents struggled with addiction. Riley's desire is to lead a better life than what his childhood gave him. Riley initially wanted to serve in the military as a military police officer, but after much consideration, he decided being a civilian police officer was the right decision. Prior to beginning BLAT, he set his sights on working for the town of Emerald Isle through connections with officers within our department. Riley enjoys working on his vehicle, caring for his chickens, and working in the yard. He also enjoys outdoor activities such as hunting, fishing, hiking. Most importantly, he values spending time, quality time, with family and friends. Riley's goal was to become a police officer whom the community can trust to demonstrate kindness and fairness. He is dedicated to developing the knowledge and skills needed to succeed as an officer and aspire to make positive contribution to the Emerald Isle Police Department. This is Mr. William Riley Klein. Both of these officers were sworn in on July 10th, 2025.
So, sir, welcome to Officers Barker and Klein. Glad to have you guys on board. Know from familial experience, the sacrifice that you make and your family members make, I'm glad you're here and thank you so much. Welcome aboard and we're grateful for you. Before we move on, I want to add one little unplanned interjection, if you will, in regards to first responders across the board. I got a message, August 8th, at 7:55 in the morning. I'm just gonna read it. I'm not gonna tell you who sent it to me. It's a, we'll call her a Facebook friend, but she's a friend. Out of the blue, hadn't heard from this lady in quite some time, but just before 8 o'clock, August 8th. "Hi, Jason. I'm in the trenches right now with my mother. We are hoping she will make it through this, but the Emerald Isle EMS are true heroes. Their tireless effort and amazing knowledge saved my mother's life Tuesday night at 10:00 PM. This crew needs to be recognized. They are top-notch, the real MVPs. I will be doing all I can for them once I am back home and able. I don't know their names yet, but there was a man and a woman on that crew who are superheroes." Author to remain anonymous, but to all of our first responders, thank you. All right, up next, we have our public announcements. I don't think we have any proclamations, but we'll go right into the public announcements. Emerald Fest, Thursdays, the next couple of, we're gonna close out the season on August 14th with Justin Costalano, if you haven't seen him, ridiculously talented young man. And August 21st, 2025, Chris and Ally, Forever All, some of the first people I met even before I thought about moving down here, some of the people that I knew that inspired me to move down here. So August 14th and the 21st, from 6:30 to 8:00 at the Western Ocean Regional Access. Free concert, no alcohol. Bring your chairs and have a really, really good time. Oh, don't give me a clicker. Stop it. All right, registration is open for participants and volunteers of the Adaptive Surf Project. Oh, what a coincidence. Have on the shirt. Adaptive Surf Project, North Carolina. For all those, yeah, what a coincidence, right? Saturday, August 16th, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I know some of our commissioners, I know Commissioner Taylor and Commissioner Brownlow were out for the initial one. Scan the QR code, look up Adaptive Surf Project. It gives people that are less able than most of us walking around here, the chance to get out in the water, the chance to enjoy the thrill, the surf, the peace, or the peace that is surfing. Some of the best people I've ever met, so don't miss it. August 16th, from 10 to 1. Look up Adaptive Surf Project NC, online or on Facebook. Get involved. They're some of the finest people I've ever met. Police educating the public. The next meeting will be held Tuesday, August 19th, 2025, from 10 to 11 in the town meeting room. The next planning board meeting will be held Monday, August 25th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, here in the boardroom as well. The next Coffee with the Cop is Thursday, August 28th, from 9:00 to 10:00, here in the boardroom. Labor Day holiday. Labor Day Holiday, Monday, September 1st. The town offices will be closed and the community center will be closed. So get your exercise in ahead of time, take the day off, and enjoy the Labor Day holiday. Beach driving permits will be available in person Monday, September 1st. Is the online application active now? Pardon me for being behind the times there. There's an online application. You can come in here to the police department, fill out the paper application. There's a safety video that you watch. There's a little 10-question test. If you fail it, you probably shouldn't be driving on the beach anyway. They'll let you know when your permit is ready. Be safe, enjoy beach driving, a timeless Emerald Isle tradition. But also, for those that do still walk the beach, for those that, hey, may not care about beach driving, let's respect the space, let's give everybody some room. Coexist, if you will, for lack of a better term. Everybody can have a really good time. Our next Neighborhood Watch meeting will be held Tuesday, September 2nd, at 4:00 here in the boardroom. The Day for Kids, put on by the EI Parks and Recs, September 6th, from 10:00 to 2:00 here in the community center. It's a free event. Bring your family, bring the kids. They're gonna have a really, really good time. Our next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held September 9th at 6:00 here live and in person. We hope to see you there. All right, let's see here. Item number 11 will be our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Some of.
All right, Commissioner Sawyer, I believe, had the motion. All in favor? We're missing a commissioner here. Okay, understood. Procedure, let's see here. Commissioner Sawyer has the motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Unless I'm sorely mistaken.
That's 5-0.
That would be fine. Yeah, yeah, dude, yeah. All right, that motion is carried. Thank you. All right, item number 12, there's an ordinance amending Chapter 8, Chapter 8 nonconformities. Hey, good evening, Linda, how are you?
Good.
Our esteemed planning director, Linda Staub. I'll leave it to you to update the board and the public, and we'll take it from there.
Okay, on July 28th, the planning board met and recommended approval of the following text amendments as shown on the board. Basically, what it does, it allows the replacement of nonconforming decks. It would allow decks which are legally nonconforming with regard to setbacks to be replaced or rebuilt to their original dimensions. It requires that the replacement does not increase the degree of nonconformity. It limits the replacement to the footprint of the existing deck and may not be enclosed or expanded. It would promote safety by encouraging replacement of aging deteriorating structures, provide relief to property owners with legally nonconforming decks, and maintain the character of established neighborhoods. And the vote for this particular item at the planning board was five to one with Bill Little voting in opposition.
Okay. All right. Before we open, if you would, hang tight for me just one second. Before I open it, the public hearing, any preliminary questions from the board, from our planning director, before we open the public hearing?
No.
All right, great. So, thank you very much. Welcome to.
Open the public hearing.
All right, Commissioner Sanderson has a motion to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried. We'll now take any public comment, same as regular public comment, three minutes. If you missed the signup sheet, don't worry about it. Now's your time to shine. Anyone wish to speak on this matter? All right, thank you. I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Some of.
Commissioner Sawyer with the motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried. There's a suggested motion. I'll open it back up to the board for any discussion and any motion at this point. Agenda item number 12.
I make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 8 nonconformities of the Unified Development Ordinance to allow the replacement of legally nonconforming decks.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Sanderson with the motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried. Thank you very much. All right, item number 13. Excuse me. Ms. Linda, you're back up.
Okay, again.
This is the, maybe the hotter topic, the dead tree permit topic. So, floor's yours, ma'am.
On July 28th, the planning board did unanimously recommend approval of the amendment to allow for dead trees to be exempt. It would only allow for the exemption of clearway dead trees from the tree removal permit. We've had an increase of approximately 50% of the number of permits that have been issued over the past year. It would define a dead tree as one that does not exhibit signs of budding, leafing, or growth, and is no longer biologically viable. It would improve public safety by allowing faster response to hazardous conditions. It would respond to our large-scale die-off of trees caused by the Laurel wilt and support responsible property management while preserving the town's broader goals of tree protection.
Thank you, ma'am. So my understanding for the board's knowledge is that this, is the potential of the discussion is to remove the permit requirement for cutting down a quote-unquote dead tree.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna give Mr. Brownlow a minute to get, I hope everything's. Please call us if we can help you, sir. Can we do anything for you in the immediate? Yes, sir, will do. Gentlemen, moment of silence and prayer for Mrs. Brownlow, please. I thank you for that. Well, thoughts and praise with the Brownlow, Brownlow family. Hope whatever's going on with Ms. Joy comes out favorable for everybody there.
And Mayor, if I may, can we get a motion to excuse Mr. Brownlow?
Make a motion to excuse Commissioner Brownlow due to an emergency.
Commissioner Sanderson with the motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried.
Thank you.
Pray she's okay, whatever's going on. Not to discount, but we will move on. The item of discussion is that there, for as long as I can remember, a permit requirement to remove any tree, whether it's dead or not. In my short time, there was, in the beginning, a permit requirement to remove a tree, whether it was dead or not. There was a $65 fee, application fee or permit fee for that tree. And those funds at that time were used to pay someone, pay a part-time person to inspect a tree and verify that it was dead. There was a motion at some point, maybe a year ago, to remove the permit fee. Still permit required, but then the fee requirement was removed. It was done. Those funds that were used to pay that person went away. That position went away. There was still a permit requirement, there was just not a fee for it. And we are here now to potentially discuss erasing the requirement for a permit to remove a dead tree. Is that correct? Is everybody tracking on the same page?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any pre-discussion from the board before we open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
All right, Commissioner Sanderson has a motion to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is up. Anyone, whether you signed up or not, anyone have anything to say? Good, bad, or in the middle regarding this issue? Yes, sir.
So what's your tell me?
If, if you would, I'm sorry, I gotta make you get up. Just for the people watching at home, I appreciate you, brother. You're here every, you're here every month and I'm glad to see you.
I'm Les Stallings at 101 Cocina. You mean to tell me that I've gotta pay to have somebody come out and inspect my lot for a tree?
No, sir.
Absolutely. This is a great place.
No, sir. No, just, just to recap, and thank you, thank you. Just to recap, I don't know, I'm gonna call it three years ago, shortly after I was elected. It, the, the requirement for a permit to cut down a tree was instituted, a dead tree, and it was for, in preservations, for preservation's sake. That was instituted, that you needed a permit to cut down a tree. And it was a $65 permit fee. Someone came out, inspected the tree, made sure it was dead, made sure you weren't cutting down a 125-year-old live oak. And it went that way. After a year or two, the permit to cut down a tree, over three inches in caliper, 36 inches off the ground, remained in effect, but the board voted to not charge anyone a fee for that permit. Okay? What we are here for tonight and what the board will decide on is there's still no fee to cut down a dead tree on your property. Still zero dollars. There's still no fee to cut down a tree on your property. What the board would, will or won't decide on tonight is whether or not you still have to have a permit, a free permit, to cut down said dead tree or not. Does that help?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right, we're still in public hearing there. Anyone else have any comments?
Good evening, Cindy, how are you?
I'm good. I'm Cindy New, 8610 Oceanview Drive. I'm actually running for mayor, but I, this tree thing just came up and I'm curious because I have a dead tree at my, my house in another location. And I would say I agree with the first lady a little bit about cutting down the trees, but I also understand the time-consuming effort of looking at every people's, everybody's tree. So my suggestion is maybe, as a homeowner, everybody's got a phone, we can all take a picture. The town has emails. Why can't we take a picture and say, this is my tree and it is dead? Add several pictures from all the angles and say it's a dead tree. To, as a CYA, to us, the other residents that's gonna come by, well, you cut that tree down. Well, guess what? I was dead, here's my picture. I told the town, whether they say yes or not, I've submitted that they know I cut the tree down. I didn't come down on Saturday, pay somebody to cut the tree down, I don't have any evidence of what I said. That's all I'm suggesting is not, whether we have to turn in a permit with no fee is just emailing a description of what we're doing with the picture and go from there.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Carol, I know the, your public comment would.
We remember.
Would fit really, really well there. Not, not falling on deaf ears, not falling on deaf ears. There's bound to be a common sense approach there somewhere.
My name is Melinda Gray. I live at 208 Cedar Street, and I am not good at coming to these meetings, but I'm gonna start being better. And I don't know you, Carol, but I like your suggestion. And when I'm around, I would be very happy to be trained to learn about trees and volunteer for no pay.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I think other people would too, if they thought that that was an opportunity.
If anybody knows trees, it's like Bo knows baseball. Carol knows trees, I can guarantee you that. All right, did I miss anyone else? Last call. I'll need a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Sawyer with the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion is carried. Thank you very much. There's a suggested motion, so I'm gonna turn it back over to the board for any subsequent discussion and potential motion.
Question, can we talk a little bit still, or is it?
Opening up the board discussion, sir. I'll talk all you want.
The, I was here when we, when all the tree stuff was going on, and for some reason, I think there was a huge outburst of construction going on, and there was a lot of trees that were getting cut down that didn't need to be cut down. And people were taking advantage of it. And I understand a dead tree's a dead tree, that's just the bottom line. But I also understand how certain people, not seeing any of these good people in here, would do it, but certain people do take advantage of the situation at certain times. I like the idea that the lady talked about, about the tree picture and stuff. And I don't know, if anything, it's a way to track it a little bit more. Nobody shows out at the event. If you did take a picture of the tree, who's to say they didn't take a picture of a different tree? But at the same sense, with the right background in the picture, if it does get challenged and say, hey, that tree wasn't dead, it's, it's another way to track it. It's, it's a lot less than somebody walking out, but at the same sense. Linda, and as far as, I know you're filling in temporarily at the planning board, how, how hard would it be to, just to look at that picture? And you could tell from the picture if it was dead or not, I would imagine, you know, it's, you see, do you see any problems with a policy like that?
Yeah, no, I don't see any problem with the policy. The, we do have the iWork software program where we have, oh, I'm sorry. We do have the iWork software program for permitting. So what we could do, each property address, we could just tag it into that piece of property so that we would have a record of it. And if somebody was wanting to do that, we could certainly make sure that it's, you know, that we know that and that they've submitted it and show them when they've submitted it and that sort of thing, so.
I like, I like that policy personally myself. I'm not sure how the rest of the board does, but I think it makes common sense. At the same sense, there's still a little bit of a tracking thing. And if the neighbor down the street that's totally against trees and stuff, you can show that the tree was dead if they're not here for a couple of months. Because I, I've seen this play out different ways. And I think it's, instead of just going cold turkey, I think that's kind of a nice pop way to go about it. But open up to the board to hear what else you think about it.
Linda, do you think that would save time for staff following that approach?
I think part of the problem is the processing and going out to the site. That takes the time. We can certainly, you know, accept the photo, have an address on the email, so we can tag it and put it into the iWork software. That, that wouldn't be a problem. I mean, it would take what?
Couple minutes?
Yeah.
Half hour tops. But it would, it would alleviate the burden of staff, save them some time having to run.
From having to travel out there.
Okay.
And, yes, sir.
And you wouldn't really need a permit. You would just be sending the picture in and saying, I've got a dead tree. They'd get the email back saying, yeah, your tree's dead, go for it, or.
And it could be, I don't know if you're thinking it would be voluntary, but that way, you know, if I cut down a tree and then my neighbor's like, that tree was alive, at least I've got documentation to show that it wasn't.
I like that process.
The, Linda, answer this for me. I, I understand Carol's point. Cindy offers a great option. But I think that oftentimes in here, we forget that two-thirds of our tax base are absentee property owners, many of whom are only here on the weekends. Are we neglecting those people or slowing them down in any way by doing that? Or is this a 24/7 submission type thing? They don't have to wait for an approval? You take a picture, send it in, go cut your tree.
I think if it's voluntary, that would be 24/7. If you just send the email with the picture.
Yes.
And we can do an education campaign, just letting people know that, you know, if you want to cut down a tree, that's fine. But if you want us to document it, send it in. That way you will know there'll be no problems in the future.
Yes. And I sincerely appreciate Carol's offer for the voluntary services and Melinda, yours as well. I would be concerned about the liability that may become involved in that. I also understand that to some degree, the tree ordinance was being abused, which is why the dead tree permit was required initially. So I get all those things, but I think we're coming into a period where that's no longer necessary. But I think it's something that we need to get through the fall and possibly readdress next year. Let's give it the, the fall and the spring for people to do their normal fall and spring cleaning on their properties. And if we find that it is being abused, then we move from there. So I, I make a motion that we approve the change. So I, I make a motion that we approve the change, the change to the ordinance, and require photographic evidence be emailed to, an email established by the planning department with no waiting period for approval.
All right. Heard you loud and clear. No waiting period is-
It's just a voluntary. They're submitting it to-
Okay.
Cover themselves, much like Mrs. New said, and I think that by coming back to visit it, we can, we can address Carol's concerns as well, and reduce any potential for liability that may fall on those volunteers if someone disagrees with a ruling that they make.
Very good. All right. Commissioner Sanderson has the motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion's carried. Thank you. All right. Linda's back up again for, number 15? Sorry. All right, 14 is, okay, I see now, number 14 was taken off the books. It was withdrawn. That was the social district per request of the original requesters. They have withdrawn their request for the Emerald Isle Backyard Social District. So now we will move on to item number, excuse me, 15, Ordinance Amending, Chapter 9, nuisances of the Code of Ordinances to Define and Authorize Removal of Hazardous Vehicles. So, you're back up again. Who's your last one?
Yes, it is. Okay, the purpose of this particular proposed amendment is to enhance public safety, health, and welfare by establishing clear criteria and enforcement mechanisms for addressing hazardous vehicles located on private property. And this would be in accordance with the North Carolina general statutes. Currently, our nuisance regulations only address junked and abandoned vehicles that are located on public property, and there's no specific provision to handle vehicles that are hazardous, abandoned, or junked and located on private property. We've been getting a couple complaints about people who've got junk cars or cars without tags and that sort of thing on their property, and the neighbors would like to see us do something, but we don't have a mechanism right now to address that. The proposed amendment would identify hazardous vehicles, and they would be, that's the definition that you see above, and it also authorizes enforcement action by allowing us to identify the hazardous vehicles, that mandate remediation and/or removal, and it provides procedures related to timelines, property owner notifications, and appeal processes in compliance with North Carolina law.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Dobbs from the board?
When the planning board looked at this, was this, did y'all vote on this to send it up here, or was this just, it's plain?
This is a nuisance regulation, so it did not go to the planning board. It's like under the police power-
Okay.
For the-
Understand. Okay. I was just seeing where it was coming from. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the board? All right. There's a suggested motion, but we don't have to go that way. I'll wait for the board.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 9, nuisances of the Code of Ordinances to define and authorize removal of hazardous vehicles.
Commissioner Taylor with the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Linda, thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank you for your extra time.
Thank you.
I know you got a lot of work to do tonight and in anticipation, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 16. We have some appointments. Item 16, A would be the planning board vacancy, B is the board of adjustment, C is the EI Parks and Recreation Association. Madam Clerk, I'll lead off with, per our rules of procedure, state statute, all that kind of stuff. I know, unfortunately, we're down one commissioner. Before we get started with the discussion, if, if we move forward tonight, so be it. If we don't move forward tonight, so be it. I am not allowed to break a tie when it comes to appointments. The only time I vote is to break a tie, with the exception of appointments. So I will take any input you have, Mr. Salado, any input you have, Mr. Rush. We can proceed, but if we proceed, know that if there is a tie procedurally correct, I'm not allowed to vote to appoint a committee member. So we'll, I'll shut up for a minute and let you guys take it from there.
Mayor Holland, Commissioner, so it, it's really at the board's discretion, discretion whether or not you want to proceed with these appointments tonight in the absence of Commissioner Brownlow. You certainly can proceed if you'd like. For the planning board appointment, we simply recommended a motion by one of the members to appoint a particular individual. There could potentially be a tie in that case, in which case you could adjust. With the ballots, probably unlikely to be a tie going forward, but again, it's really at the board's discretion whether or not you want to proceed with the appointments tonight. In both cases, I don't think it's critical that the appointments be made tonight. The Board of Adjustment does not have any business pending. Our next planning board meeting is later this month, but certainly six members can function reasonably well. The Emerald Isle Parks and Recreation Association, it is the, the recommendation is to reappoint Pastor Clay Olson to that seat, and that seat is actually reserved specifically for someone affiliated with the chapel by the sea. So if you don't feel comfortable going with the planning board, the Board of Adjustment, you may want to move on to Parks and Recreation Association, but again, completely at your discretion.
And I'll also add, again, if I'm not procedurally correct, I know in, like I said, a short period of three and a half years, there's been a motion to appoint to this committee, a motion to appoint to that committee. I don't know, 12, 18-ish months ago, I was corrected to, when it came to appointments such as this, there was a roll call vote, if I'm not sorely mistaken. I don't know how that affects where we are tonight, but when it came to appointments, it was, because it's really easy for someone to say, hey, I'll appoint this person, motion pushed through, whatever. I believe we moved towards procedural correctness some months ago or longer to the roll call vote. Either of you or anyone else can speak to that. Just want to make sure we do it right the first time, if we can.
Yes. So I think we've got it set up as we need to. If y'all want to move forward, we can certainly please that process. So I guess I'll leave it to you all to decide if you want to move forward, and then we'll go from there.
It's, it's my understanding that we were going to be using a ballot form of voting. Is that correct?
That was what we did when we had to redo everything. I don't think the roll call worked particularly well for that instance, and since we're still doing that for the Board of Adjustment, that's where we're at there. For the singular member of the planning board, it would be roll call as per procedure. Once again, up to y'all if you want to proceed that route.
We have, if we're doing it the right way, per council's advisement, be a roll call for the planning board, a ballot for the planning, oh, excuse me, Board of Adjustment, and then for Rec Association would be what?
One vacancy would be a roll call per procedure.
Okay. So roll call, ballot, roll call.
I mean, I personally feel like these are very important positions in the ultimate search. I would, I would agree with that as the last one. I think that's a pretty obvious.
I can agree with that.
I'll make, make a motion to defer the planning board and Board of Adjustment's appointments until next month, but proceed with the third for the-
Parks and Recreation.
Parks and Rec Association.
All right. Commissioner Wooten, to table a planning board, one vacancy, table Board of Adjustment, seven, and move forward with a roll call vote on Parks and Rec, item C. Motion's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move to 16C, one vacancy on the EI Parks and Rec Association, Inc. Back to the board. I'll tell you what, well, I don't know how many applications we've had. I know we've had a recommendation. I'll start to my right, move my way left for a roll call vote for the EI Parks and Rec Association, one vacancy. Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion for-
Just need a name, sir.
Pastor Clay.
Pastor Clay Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Wooten?
Pastor Clay Olson.
Pastor Clay Olson.
Pastor Clay Olson.
Sorry, Pastor Clay Olson.
Pastor Clay Olson.
Unanimously, Pastor Clay Olson. Welcome back, and thank you for your continued service, Pastor Clay. All right. Item number 17 will be comments from our clerk, attorney, and manager. Clerk. As usual, thank you, ma'am. Mr. Salado, any closing comments, sir?
Quiet from the legislature recently, was also anticipating a much longer meeting, so we will have our closed session after this. Nothing else from me. Thank everybody for coming out and performing your civic duty. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rush?
Just a few comments from the written materials. First, we expect to bring an ordinance amendment before you at the September meeting to strengthen our ability to deal with nuisance dwellings. We are currently working hard on three different locations on Emerald Drive, Craig Drive, and Channel Drive. That ordinance will strengthen our ability to deal with those, with a goal to either have those repaired or demolished as soon as possible. All are in very, very bad shape, need to be addressed. We also expect to have a street resurfacing contract for your consideration at the September meeting, so that's coming forward. One thing I wanted to just point out to the board, the Bog Inlet dredging was scheduled to begin last week, but was actually delayed until later this week so that they could hopefully complete the work with more favorable tides in Bog Inlet. So glad to see that work going forward. Finally, I just wanted to note for the board that Fire Chief Mathias is not here this evening. He is actually in Appleton, Wisconsin, checking in on the two new fire engines that are being constructed by Pierce. So pleased to see that moving forward. We expect to take delivery of those vehicles sometime in the spring, probably in the March timeframe. So with that, happy to answer any questions you may have about anything in the materials or really anything else.
Thanks, sir. Any questions from the board for Mr. Rush? All right. Thank you very much. Comments from the board and myself. Commissioner Taylor, final thoughts, sir?
Yeah, I just want to say, you mentioned about the Adopt the Surf again, just give them another plug one more time. That was probably one of the more amazing things I've done in a long time, and I highly recommend going out and volunteering. I think it said it was on the 16th. The experience you get is just heartwarming, the, the kids that are out there, and the adults, and the actual, the other volunteers as part of it. It's, it's touching, very touching. So if you have the time and want to spend some time out on the water or on the beach, they're, they're always looking for people to help with the surfboards, and my job when I went at that time was just to kind of guide the surfboard as they floated in and then pulled them back out again. So it's, it's a lot of fun. Highly recommend doing it. I'm glad to see that Emerald Isle's part of that. It's, it'll be, you'll, you'll be hooked once you do it, if you decide you want to be part of that. Other announcement, Emerald Isle Fishing Tournament opened up. We, we try to raise a lot of funds and stuff, so if you like to fish, it's September the 27th. You go onto the website, ei fishing dot com, sign up. We always give back to the community, as most of you know. Last year, we just donated some chairs and tables, about 240 chairs and 40 tables to the community center. Six scholarships went out. It's a big community event. We do it right here at the gymnasium now. We outgrew the Islander, so we're doing it here now, and it's, it's a lot of fun. On Friday night, we have an auction, always looking for items to auction off. All the money goes back to either scholarships, or it goes to our community. We try to do six scholarships every year. We just hit $96,000 this year with scholarships. Went to the local community schools in Swansboro, and just could, always use in volunteers, always need help. So please come out and help with that. But the Adopt the Surf's coming right around the corner. Definitely go out and help with that. They need some help, and it's, it's a lot of fun. Thanks for coming out, and for the people that signed up to sit up here in this seat that I'm, I'm sitting in right now, I wish you the best in the campaign. It's, it's quite an experience. Learned a lot sitting here. It's a, looking at it from a different point of view, so I hope you enjoy the, joy whoever wins the seat out. So good luck on that. That's all, ma'am.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Wooten?
First, thanks, everybody, for coming out. I appreciate you and your comments, the public hearings or otherwise. And thank you, Carol. I, you're my go-to tree expert. I'm hopeful that folks don't take advantage of the situation, and it, you do see quite a few of those clearly dead trees, though, and I think that's part of what has folks talking about it. Welcome to the two new police officers that joined. Look forward to working with y'all and seeing you about town. For the Adaptive Surf, that's adaptive surf NC dot com or dot org?
I'm not sure the exact website, but Adaptive Surf, North Carolina, in a Google search or Facebook search will get you there.
I did have a couple.
And I'm, I'm sure we can provide an update on our digital channels whether-
Yeah, that would be great. I had a couple of folks ask, and I kept saying dot com, and then catching myself, and I wasn't sure. So I know that's very popular, and also a plug for the fishing tournament. I know you guys got that launched out tomorrow. It looked like you had a new logo and everything else, so I'm looking forward to getting my EI Fishing Tournament gear for 2025.
Thank you.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sawyer?
Just like I say, thanks, everybody, for coming out. Staff, great job, as always. We'll see you next month.
Thank you to everyone. Thank you especially to you, Carol, Cindy, for offering creative suggestions that we were actually hopefully able to incorporate to a degree that we can all benefit from to some degree. Thanks to our wonderful staff. Prayers for Mrs. Brownlow, and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, to the family of Libby Heverly, our thoughts and prayers go out to you tonight in your time of grief, pain, and I hope that in due time, those feelings of grief are slowly but surely replaced with fond memories and love, and I won't say anything else about that. Thank you all for being here. I hope you all get home safe, and I won't say anything else. That's all I have to say. I can get long-winded, but I won't right now. At this point, we'll go to item number 19. I'm gonna ask for a motion to cover 19A and B. Once we go into this closed session, I'll ask everyone that is not our clerk or an elected official, our town attorney, to leave the room. We'll say that once we come out of closed session, there's no proposed actions or motions, so you're not gonna miss anything. We're gonna, once we finish talking about what we have to talk about, we're gonna come out of closed session. I'll immediately ask for a motion to adjourn, and we'll go home, but I thank you all for being here before we get to that. Thank you so much.